If we will all rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Rowe?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller?
Present.
Councilman Racy?
Here.
Councilman Porter?
Here.
Councilman Sanders?
Present.
Councilman Gabriel?
Present.
Councilman Weber?
Present.
You do have a quorum with all seven members for the special study session for today, Tuesday, November 7th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
The first item is a presentation. Item 1A is a presentation by McKenna Associates regarding medical marijuana. And I believe Lori's going to introduce Sarah and John, and then we'll continue with the PowerPoint.
Good evening, members of council, mayor. It is a pleasure to stand before you tonight to let you know that we are at a point that we have been able to find a group to come in and talk to you. A lot of you have had a lot of interest in the medical marijuana ordinance that's out there. As you know, it's been discussed for quite some time. A lot of communities around us are looking at it. As you know, today's election day in a lot of communities. So I would imagine that a lot more communities will be looking at this after tomorrow. A lot of communities did not want to pull the trigger until after today. So we are a little bit ahead of the game in the sense that we are educating our council and the fact that we are already looking at an ordinance. It's my pleasure to introduce to you John Jackson. John is the owner of McKenna Associates. This is a group that I've worked with over quite a last, gosh, 10 years? 10 years now I had involvement with in the previous community I worked in. And Sarah Traxler, Sarah has a lot of experience in municipalities, working with DDAs. And they were actually recommended by someone at the state that had seen their presentation and thought it would be really good for us to bring them in. So Sarah and John, I will turn it over to you. We also have members of our planning commission and our zoning board here tonight, and thank you for being here.
Excuse me.
Thank you, Lori. That was a great introduction. I appreciate it. As Lori pointed out, my name's John Jackson with McKenna, and I'm the president. And with me is Sarah Traxler, vice president. And both of us, as well as many others in our firm, work for communities that have a lot of questions about the future of medical marijuana in their communities. What are the impacts? What are the different policy options? And there's still a lot of unanswered questions. So we put this presentation together a while ago, trying to take a broad view of the issue. You know, what are the impacts? More than just, you know, what are the tools that are available? We talked a little bit about that. But we also, like I said, wanted to take a broader look at what are the impacts? So what should you be aware of as a community formulating these policies? And so tonight, we're happy to be here and available to answer questions after we do the presentation, of course. Sarah's going to start out, and then I'm going to jump in, and we're going to do a little back and forth throughout the presentation. But we hope it's helpful.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone. As John mentioned, our firm provides assistance to many local units of government in Michigan. And the reason I wanted to start off by noting that is because in a lot of communities, there's been interest by advocacy groups and also business people who are looking to establish medical marijuana facilities. So as John mentioned, we take a broad view because our clients are local units of government, all different sorts of local units, you know, from a rural township to an urban community, you know, in a ring suburb like Wayne. So we really approach it from the municipal side and don't advocate for or against, but rather try and help our clients walk through the process of deciding what's most locally appropriate and relevant to your development situation, your community values, and so on and so forth. So I think you'll see a lot of that. First, I want to know, how many of you have sat through training or heard a presentation on medical marijuana, including people in the audience? So it looks like about half of you have heard, you know, at least some level of detail on the most recent legislation. So for some of you, this may be a reminder or a refresher. But I think hopefully towards the end of the presentation, we'll be able to help you at least move the ball forward a tiny, tiny bit in coming to understand how you might go about making a decision. So in 2008, everyone will recall that the state of Michigan, the voters in the state of Michigan, approved a ballot proposal that legalized medical marijuana in Michigan. And what that did was, A, it allowed for people who received a prescription, you know, kind of in the most simple terms, to be able to receive marijuana from someone who was allowed to grow it for them, or they were allowed to grow it for themselves. The act was specific about who could be a caregiver and who could be a qualified patient. But it did leave a lot of gray area for those of us in zoning and land use who weren't really sure, other than on single-family residential properties, where could this be grown? How is it going to be moved around our communities? You know, it wasn't really specific about a lot of the operational sides of it. So we really appreciate that more recently there have been updates to the standards. A qualified patient in the 2008 law was allowed to have 2.5 ounces of usable marijuana. They were allowed to have the primary caregiver, as I mentioned, and basically could grow their own or have someone grow it for them. And there are a set of standards and rules that were associated with that. So the state of Michigan has been administering those permits, if you want to call them, or licenses. And it's been fairly easy and successful. I know in most of my client communities, we haven't had a ton of complaints or disagreements or land use conflicts. So seems like things have been going along steadily. So then last year, in the fall of 2016, the legislature, you know, brought forth a bill that the governor signed, actually three bills or statutes now, talking about legalizing and regulating additional uses and/or facilities, as they're referred to, regarding medical marijuana. Back in 2016, they said that they would start issuing licenses and accepting applications in December of 2017. So, you know, a year ago, we're all thinking, okay, we have time to figure this out. The state's going to get their act together. We're going to really understand what all this means for us. And still, there's a little bit of gray area. So many of our community, you know, client communities find themselves still not having made a decision. One distinction that's very important about the 2016 laws, which is a huge relief to local units of government, whether they're for or against it, is that the statutes specifically state that you are allowed to not allow the one or all of the facilities in your community. And that is somewhat radical in terms of zoning because we're supposed to be able to legally show that there is a way for any use to be legally established in your community. So you think about sexually oriented businesses, other typically locally unwanted land uses. And this is really special in that they explicitly said in the statutes, you're allowed to prohibit these uses, one or all of them. So there are three statutes, as I mentioned. Public Act 282 and 283 are a little less important to our conversation tonight, but we want to mention them. 282 basically allows for food and edibles to be processed and provided. So whereas right now, it's just sort of, you know, the plants being able to be sold, 282 specifically allows that there could be lotions or topical ointments, and also food or candy or other types of things that had marijuana chemicals in them. I'm not a scientist, so, you know, I'll basically be talking about it in pretty simple terms. Public Act 283 is an interesting, I would say, safeguard in that it allows for and requires a system to be set up by the state and complied with by the facility operators to be able to track a marijuana plant from its seed, you know, its state of seed, all the way through to when it's sold. So all of these different facilities that we'll be talking about have to be logging information into a system that is, you know, available to the state and available to be monitored, saying, you know, plant A went from here to here to here to here to here, and then it produced this much money as a result of it. So it's really kind of formalizing the business and operation of medical marijuana. Public Act 281 is the statute that is most relevant to us in discussing how you want to handle land uses in Wayne. And it describes that the state will be issuing licenses for five types of uses related to medical marijuana. There are growers, there are processors, and they're the ones who make those lotions, ointments, and foodstuffs. There are secure transporters, you know, again, this is some way more specific than was in the 2008 statute. Provisioning centers, as they're described in the statute, or commonly referred to as dispensaries. And then safety compliance facilities, where the marijuana is required to be tested. So we'll go through quickly definitions of each of those five facilities, and then also kind of the considerations for the licensees. So a grower is exactly what it sounds like. It's someone that grows, cultivates, dries, you know, kind of handles that agricultural side of it, if you will. Typically, it's grown indoors, right? Yes, definitely. So growers package and sell it to processors or provisioning centers directly. There are three types of licenses for growing marijuana, and they have to do with the number of plants that you're allowed to have under your license, A, B, and C. A means that you can have 500 plants. B means you can have 1,000. And C means 1,500 plants. The statute authorizes the sale of the seeds or plants only to a grower by means of a secure transporter. So, you know, kind of connecting the dots on how these uses work together, they can only be driven around in a secure transporter. It also authorizes the sale of marijuana other than seeds only to someone who will be processing it and making it into food or ointment, or directly to a dispensary or provisioning center, as it's more formally called. It also allows you to transport it by the secure transporter. And then there's kind of a separation of licenses here. So if you are applying to be a grower, you must not have an interest in a secure transporter business or a safety compliance or testing facility. So you can only grow or dispense. You may not, you know, transport it or test it. Importantly to land use discussion is that growing can only take place in districts that allow for agricultural or industrial uses. That doesn't mean that the zoning districts have to be titled agriculture or industrial. It means that the districts have to provide for one or both of those uses. So some very intense commercial districts in certain communities do allow for industrial uses, light industrial uses. So this is going to mean something different from community to community. The next type of use is the processor. And again, this is the place that makes the topicals or foodstuffs. The license authorizes a processor to purchase only from a licensed grower and sell their products only to a licensed provisioning center or dispensary. You're only allowed to transport it by means of a licensed secure transporter. And you are not allowed to have an interest in a secure transporter or one of the testing facilities. So again, it's kind of the separation of these business licenses so that there's not, you know, a dominant force or, I suspect, inability to kind of hide your seeds or, you know, not really kind of fully comply with all of the checkpoints or data points. The next type of license is the secure transport. This one's a pretty obvious one, as some of the other ones are. And that is when you can store marijuana, actually, before you're transporting it. So it could be a storage use and then like a trucking or distribution use. Excuse me. In addition to being able to store and transport the marijuana, they're also allowed to store and transport money that was associated with the medical marijuana. And of course, they charge a fee for the storage and transport of the marijuana. Transporters may only be transporters. So if you're an investor or a licensee in a transporter, you are not allowed to have the four other types of licenses, any of the other four types of licenses. So that's one of them where you can only be a transporter, or only be one thing. Provisioning center, again, is the use that's typically called a dispensary. And that is where a grower or processor sells their marijuana to a store, a dispensary. So the dispensary then dispenses the marijuana to either a qualified patient or a qualified caregiver under the 2008 act. A non-commercial location used by a primary caregiver, so under the 2008 act, if there was a legally established and zone for place where someone was growing their marijuana, that is not considered a provisioning center under the purposes of this act. So if it was a place where the marijuana was grown under the 2008 statute, that's not automatically considered a dispensary. The reason that matters is because some communities did allow for growing of medical marijuana if you were a qualified caregiver. And it's important to note that, you know, if that was allowed under the '08 statute in your community, you wouldn't automatically have to call that a dispensary now that there are these new standards. So again, the provisioning center is the, authorizes the purchase or transfer of the marijuana only from a grower. And the transfers must be directly to a provisioning center from a separate marijuana facility by means of a secure transporter. So all of these slides are kind of describing how it moves from one facility to the next, and of course, you know, in great detail if you read these. This is probably the most text-heavy slide that we have because there are really specific rules about the provisioning centers and the dispensaries. Marijuana must only be sold after it's been tested, and that's the first qualification here. So it's required to have been tested and to bear a label. Provisioning center or dispensary licensees are required to enter all their transactions and their inventory into that state-required seed-to-sale system. So again, you know, they're required to really enter all of that information in there. They're also required to confirm that someone who is purchasing medical marijuana has a current card or prescription, if you will, to be buying that marijuana from them. It's on them to check that that person's card is valid. They're not allowed to actually allow the sale or consumption of alcohol or tobacco products on site. So, you know, this isn't kind of like a cigar bar, cigar lounge, or something like that. You know, it's very specifically only for medical marijuana. And then they're not allowed to kind of co-locate with a physician who's handing out the prescriptions for medical marijuana. So a person who doesn't have a card couldn't, you know, go into a store, get their prescription, and then, you know, walk into a different room and immediately buy medical marijuana on the same site. So there's that separation out of the doctors who are providing the prescriptions and the places where a person can purchase the medical marijuana. So needless to say, there's a lot of rules that all of these uses are required to follow. The safety compliance facility is basically where all of the marijuana is tested, and I think a lot of that is for purity. That's my understanding, and making sure that there's, you know, not bad chemicals in it. They test it for contaminants and other cannabinoids, and then they return test results and may return the marijuana back to the marijuana facility, or it may go to a dispensary or provisioning center. So this slide describes how the marijuana could move from, you know, one of the facilities or uses to another after it's been at the safety compliance center. But the important thing to understand is that the marijuana must be tested, and it must comply with the rules that the state is establishing. So that was the Cliff Notes Fast So that was the Cliff Notes fast version of the five different types of facilities. And, you know, just kind of important to have an understanding of those five and the relationship between one another for when you're thinking about what might be locally acceptable in Wayne. I already noted that the statute does specifically say that you can prohibit issuing one or more types of licenses. So there's different ways to do that, and we'll get into that further along. But the bottom line is that, as with any other type of municipal action that you, the planning commission, and other boards and commissions take, you know, it either has to be done by ordinance or resolution, and you should, you know, really thoughtfully think out all of the related potential effects and on and on. So taxes and fees, I'm sure most everyone has heard that that's a part of the statute. So the statute specifically described that local units of government would be able to share in the tax revenue, sales tax revenue, of the medical marijuana uses. So this is kind of the carrot, or at least, you know, a compensation for services revenue, it could be considered. So a tax is imposed on each of the provisioning centers at the rate of 3% of their retail receipts. Distribution goes from local units of government where you're allowing the facilities. It also goes to counties in which a facility is located. There's a provision for public safety, so county sheriffs, Michigan State Police take part in some of that revenue as well. And then, of course, the state is going to take 30%. I know that wouldn't surprise anyone, that they'll be taking their share of the revenue. And then a commission on law enforcement standards for training local law enforcement officers. So basically, anywhere where a facility is located, the different local units of government and also kind of the law enforcement agencies will be sharing in some of the revenue associated with that extra 3%. We have a couple of test cases that John will run through to show what the potential impact of that is. But again, you know, we don't know what that level of revenue is until all these places start getting established and the first year of, you know, receipts are generated and on and on. So as you'll see later, we kind of like to recommend that our clients, think of it in theory first as a revenue-neutral proposition, think about the land use impacts, and then start kind of getting more specific on whether you think that it could move the needle for your local budget and if you think you could cover costs in administering this type of a land use. So finally, and this is also very important to you and, you know, your manager and your staff who will have to be, who might have to be processing these applications and covering their, you know, budgetary costs. A municipality is allowed to charge a $5,000 application fee or license fee for each facility that someone is applying for. Now, that is meant to cover your costs, but as we understand it, you know, that's definitely a reasonable number for communities who might be accepting and analyzing and, you know, moving these applications through the chain of command. At the very least, your, you know, manager, economic development, planning, zoning, clerk, law enforcement, DPW maybe even, you know, you have probably at least seven or eight departments or administrators who would be looking at an application, spending time on it, you know, not to mention also potential law enforcement if there were ever any runs, as there are to regular businesses or industrial users all the time. So $5,000 can, you know, vanish pretty quickly when you think about all of the time that people will be spending on that. For our clients and other clients that we've reviewed their application procedures, we've only seen the $5,000 application fee. We have not seen a community that charges less. So at this point, for those who are allowing facilities, $5,000, which is the max, is the magic number. And they also are routinely requiring annual application and licensing, like most communities do with their business licenses. So that fee would be charged annually for that renewal of the license. So John's going to talk a little bit about impacts and what you might be able to expect if you were allowing some of those facilities.
So one of the things that popped out of me of the slides that Sarah was showing earlier, she showed the fact that growers can only grow in areas that are, that have industrial or agricultural uses that are allowed in those districts. And one of the other trends that we've seen in urban communities is the growing desire to have districts where urban agriculture is allowed. So, you know, that's another area to think about, you know, as you're looking at other zoning implications. If you do have districts that allow for urban agriculture, you know, that, this might coincide with that as well. So as Sarah mentioned, I'm going to talk a little bit about what are the impacts. I'm going to talk a little bit about what the, and where we came up with this information is we pulled together some studies that have been done in other states where marijuana has been legalized medically and otherwise to sort of see what the impacts are. So again, our approach is, is to try to look broadly about what is the impact going to be on your community, so that you can inform your residents about what they can expect because, you know, there's a lot of perception out there, there's a lot of unknowns out there. So we try to provide some information that will, that will help give some answers. As you all know, there's people who support marijuana and those who are against it. And some of the things that people refer to who are in support of it, they talk about how it, legalizing it reduces crime. They talk about how legalizing it may be a source of revenue for communities. It talks, they talk about lowering criminal justice costs, improving public health, improving traffic safety by legalizing it and setting up standards for how it's, for how it's regulated. And some say that it's going to stimulate the economy. Others who are opposed to it point to the fact that it spurs marijuana, it's a gateway drug, you've heard that term, and it's, it leads to other spin-off effects, increases crime because you have concentrations of these uses, concentrations of grow facilities, concentrations of provisioning centers that might be magnets for, for crime, so that therefore might be harmful to the public health. And also, some people have claimed that it actually lowers educational achievement of teens. We've heard those studies that say that it sort of, it doesn't allow the teenage brain to mature and continue to grow. So the first study that we took a look at is from an organization, a think-tank organization called Cato Institute. And they took a look at the effects from multiple jurisdictions, multiple states, and they looked at what are the impacts of other drug and alcohol use in communities or states where they legalize marijuana? What are the impacts of crime, road safety as well, school performance? And in general, their conclusion was there was minimal impact in all of these areas. I'm going to go over each of the different areas real quickly, but to summarize, their conclusion was there is minimal impact by legalization of medical marijuana. So the first area that they looked at was whether or not legalizing medical marijuana led to increases in other drug or alcohol use. And the study determined that there was no dramatic changes in the use of marijuana, cocaine, or other drugs, including alcohol. In Colorado, they say that there is limited available data, and Alaska shows that there is no obvious effect of legalization on youth marijuana use. With respect to the impact on crime, the studies show that, again, there's no dramatic changes in crime rates in the states that legalize marijuana. That means there is no increase in crime and there's no decrease in crime. So I want to make sure to point that out. So, you know, advocates show that there may be a decrease, and people who are opposed to it say that there may be an increase. So it's flat-lined, there's no, no needle movement in either direction. All told, the study says that crime in Seattle has neither soared or plummeted in the wake of legalization. So again, it hasn't increased or decreased. With respect to road safety, and so they studied what the traffic implications were, they studied, you know, police reports, accident reports, and things like that. And again, the report, these are quotes right out of the report, "No spike in fatal traffic accidents or fatalities followed the liberalization of medical marijuana in 2009." The study also said that although fatality rates have reached slightly higher peaks in recent summers, no obvious jump occurred after legalization in 2002, or the opening of provisioning centers in 2014. One area that, of course, we're all worried about is the teen use of marijuana and how it may affect, you know, their performance, getting through school, going through school, and moving forward. The study says that the total suspensions declined while there was an increase in drug-related suspensions. So, you know, again, sort of interesting statistics there. Washington State test scores remained unchanged. So again, no increases, no decreases. So the next thing I want to talk about is a study that was done by the National Academies of Science, Engineering, and Medicine that looked at the health implications of marijuana use. And basically, they broke these results down into ones where they had strong empirical evidence to support their conclusions, where they had moderate evidence, and then where there was weak correlation between the evidence that they had and their conclusions. So where they had strong evidence regarding the controlled trials to support the cannabis or use and the effects of marijuana was for the treatment of chronic pain in adults, treatment for nausea related to chemotherapy, and reducing spastic symptoms for multiple sclerosis patients. So again, they found that there was a strong correlation between the use of medical marijuana and people suffering from these, from these effects. Less strong or moderate evidence had to do with whether or not medical marijuana improved the short-term sleep for individuals with sleep apnea, fibromyalgia, chronic pain, and multiple sclerosis. So, in other words, it helps with the symptoms, but not necessarily as a sleep aid. Weak evidence, there's weak evidence in terms of the effect that medical marijuana had on improving symptoms of dementia, improving symptoms associated with glaucoma, and reducing depression in patients with chronic pain or multiple sclerosis. So was not found to have a strong relationship or effect on people suffering from those particular ailments. And then finally, weak evidence in terms of whether or not it helped in providing better outcomes after traumatic brain injuries. So these are some of the, all these things, the traumatic brain injury, sleep disorders, and things like that are afflictions that a lot of people say that they need medical marijuana for. So that's why these particular ailments were studied in terms of the impact on marijuana. Okay, so the next section of issues I'm going to talk a little bit about is, you know, what are the fiscal impacts, the potential fiscal impacts? What are the growth anticipated associated with the medical marijuana industry? What are employment opportunities and things like that? And I'm going to walk through a couple of these as they relate to grow facilities as well as the other uses as well. So what is the potential tax revenue for a growing facility? And here you can see we analyzed it with respect to each of the different categories, 500 plants, 1,000 plants, 1,500 plants. And we made some assumptions here in terms of how much product was going to be generated. We're going to look at, obviously, indoor growing facilities. We anticipate that each grower is going to have three harvests per year. And we estimate that 1.3 ounces of marijuana is going to be generated per plant, and that the value of that is anywhere between $100 and $400 per ounce. So based on those assumptions, you look at the value generated per harvest for 500 plants, and it ranges between $65,000 and $260,000. And so that's for each harvest. And again, there's three harvests per year. So the annual revenue for someone with a license to grow 500 plants would be between $195,000 and $780,000. So applying the taxes to that, the total taxes generated from that would be between $5,850 to $23,400 per operation growing 500 plants. So of course, that multiplies pretty quickly, as you can see in this chart. For someone with 1,500 plants, the value per year would be between $585,000 and $2.3 million, and the taxes generated would be between $17,550 and $70,200. So there's a lot of money involved in this, obviously. So some questions that come up that we've encountered in other communities is how much space is required for these different uses? And that comes into play when you look at what districts might be appropriate, separation requirements, you know, minimum lot sizes and things like that. So looking at a facility that's growing 500 plants would take only 700 square feet. So it doesn't take a lot of room to grow these, to grow these plants. 1,000, obviously, 1,400 square feet, and for 1,500, 2,100 square feet. So again, not a lot of space to generate the income that we saw in the previous slide. So how many people do these facilities employ? Again, keep in mind how small a 500-plant facility is. That would employ about one person. Looking at a larger facility, 1,500, up to three people. So again, it's not, it's not an employee-intensive operation. One of the uses that Sarah mentioned that's covered in the new legislation are testing facilities. So we ran some numbers to see, again, how much revenue is generated by a testing facility. And this study was a case study based on a facility in Illinois. This particular facility ran about 75 tests per week. Each test, they charged $350 per test. So working out the numbers on an annual basis, they generated about $1.37 million for a testing facility. This particular facility didn't only test marijuana, they tested other pharmaceuticals or other things as well. So this wasn't their sole source of revenue, but again, that's a pretty significant amount of revenue. How many people do provisioning centers employ? Actually, this is based on the existing number of known dispensaries in 2016 in Michigan. So the 76 dispensaries in Michigan in 2016, the largest facility employed 20 people, the smallest employed one. The total number of employees was 310, but as you can see here, the typical number of employees per facility was three people. How much revenue do the existing dispensaries generate? And again, this was based on 2016 numbers, the number of dispensaries. And it was estimated that the maximum sales generated from a dispensary was $28 million, almost $29 million. Minimum sales was $80,000, so in that range. The total sales generated by dispensaries in 2016 was about $308 million by 74 dispensaries. So a lot of people are asking, you know, how will medical marijuana sales increase? And so again, we did some projections here in terms of the sales by weight, by value, and by the in terms of the sales by weight, by value, and by the revenue. And I'm going to go back here for a second to show that the total sales in 2016 for the 74 dispensaries was $308 million. And it's estimated that the total sales by value, the value of this, is going to increase to a minimum of $370 million, up to $1.5 billion in sales. So, again, there's a lot of revenue associated with this. And you can see the tax implications associated with this. Municipalities are going to get 25% of that, which means there's between $2.7 million and $11.1 million that is going to be distributed to municipalities based on the formula, the number of licenses that municipality has. So, how will demand for dispensaries increase? And again, this is pretty much a simple formula based on the amount of medical marijuana generated currently with 74 facilities, based, and multiplied by the anticipated growth. There could be between 88, almost 90 dispensaries, up to 355 dispensaries. Are going to be looking for locations, you know, to set up once the act goes into effect. And, of course, it's not going to all happen in December, obviously. It's going to happen over time. So, those are some of the issues that we anticipate. And what we wanted to talk about now is, you know, what are some of the things that you should be considering? You're looking at policies for regulating this, what your approach is going to be. So, we put together some questions that you should be asking yourself. But I guess before we get into that, does anyone have any questions on sort of the nuts and bolts, the summary and the impacts?
We'll start with the council. Anyone here have questions?
I have a couple.
Yes, Councilman Sanders.
First question is, you sort of alluded to the end. So, this isn't something that we have to be ready for on December 15th, then?
Correct.
All right, because...
Yeah.
All right.
You don't have to, you don't have to be ready on that day.
Do you, from your opinion, do you believe that if we're not ready on December 15th, that we're going to be left out in the cold, so to speak?
So, the big so what of all of this is that there's a really big push for legalizing recreational marijuana in 2018. So, right now, the advocates are collecting signatures. And, you know, just most people believe that they'll get enough signatures for that to be on the ballot next year. A lot of the ramping up, you know, we've heard is associated with the assumption that recreational marijuana would be legalized in 2018. So, I think, as with any new industry, you know, it's completely a unique circumstance. To me, I've been in this field and in this career for 13 years. And, you know, there hasn't been a new industry, really, you know, that's come onto the ground during that time. So, I think you are not necessarily missing out, but that's the big fear, especially coming off the terrible recession that we're still coming off, especially with property taxes still being, you know, lower than is necessary to support the fine services that our residents demand. So, the concept of missing out, you know, must be considered in today's economic climate, which is still not rosy for most communities in Michigan, if any. So, will you miss out? I mean, crystal ball says, no, probably not. But, do you, you know, think you're in a situation where you want to try and capture as much as you can?
Another question. This, what is the anticipated, if we know, if we've looked into it, what are the anticipated? Because the revenues, obviously, and tax revenues are great. What, in addition, are the property tax increases that we're looking, or the new property taxes that we're looking at?
So...
Have you done research on that?
In many of my communities, I've asked them to pull records on, you know, for example, vacant industrial structures that are there. So, and we know there's not really personal property tax associated with it. So, what we're talking about is, do you anticipate that your taxable value and assessed value would still be increasing? Are there a lot of vacancies in your community that would, you know, now be able to be occupied? That would move the needle on property taxes? So, it's always good to run a few test cases, specific, with specific sites in mind, whether it's vacant land or vacant buildings.
See, you know, it's such a hard question to answer because while it very well may make good use of an underutilized industrial building or underutilized storefront, you know, it may have a positive effect on that one piece of property. But what are the broader implications? You know, what uses don't want to locate near there?
Right.
And so, what are the broader implications of the property values? We don't know that, you know, we have not studied that.
And, you know, the studies that we have found are very difficult to come by. A lot of it is like the health-related studies. The economic impact still, just, it's not studied as other industries are. It's really interesting, if you even just kind of casually try to look it up on the internet, you'll see a lot of information that's specifically put out by advocates, understandably, and not a lot of independent research on, you know, the economic effects.
And, I'm sorry, one more thing to throw on there. Again, it's sort of a land use policy, you know, where do you put these uses? It may have more of a positive impact in an industrial area. But in a downtown area, if you're going to put something like this in terms of a dispensary or provisioning center, it may not have the positive impact you're looking for.
Two more questions at the moment. Right now, the law states that we, the state gives us, and there was a little bit of a chuckle when you said state, it's going to give you 30%. What's to say that the state doesn't come back later and say, well, we want a little bit of bigger piece of the puzzle? Just like with personal property tags. So, it's a boon that happens that doesn't happen?
I don't think there are any guarantees.
Right.
Yeah, that question has come up, you know, multiple presentations, multiple discussions, and there's no guarantee.
And, there was one other question. I'll go ahead, I can't think of the other question.
Mayrow, I do have questions.
Can we go to this side? Mr. For...
Thank you.
Councilman Carter.
So, this is sort of a technical question, you probably haven't looked at it. But, do you know how much of, let's say, let's say there's a 500-plant facility. How much of that marijuana is transported to the testing facility and actually tested? Is there like a sample, or is it a...
Oh.
I'm not sure. We can write down questions that we don't know the answers to, and we'll get back with you. Oh, thank you very much. Yeah, I think we could find that probably in the statute or the rules.
All right.
Proposed rules.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mayor Protem.
First of all, in these acts, it only prohibit, or it only allows the product to be only grown inside a facility and not outside? Am I understanding?
Yeah, it has to be secured and locked up and everything, so...
Okay, fenced in, fenced in, field would also suffice, open?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Because it didn't specify, it specified that.
I think, under the 2008, you couldn't prevent, like, a homeowner from, you know, following, who had a qualified caregiver card. You couldn't prevent them from growing outdoors if they were able to show that it was totally secured, you know, completely fenced in and locked off. But I just think everyone does it inside.
My next question is that if passage of legalization next year, would that lower the provisions and restrictions on what we're currently looking at today in the future? Where be able to grow at home or on their own and not have to necessarily go through those channels in order to be provided with that product?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
What I've heard, and again, there's a lot of speculation, but the state is investing its time and effort to go through and set up all these different...
Facilities.
And procedures and rules in anticipation that it may very well be legalized. And so, then, all these rules would still apply.
Okay.
That's sort of the speculation. They wouldn't invest, the state wouldn't invest as much effort and money to get up to speed with these hoops if they weren't anticipating.
Kind of like bringing a probe...
Yeah.
Right.
Prohibition on this...
Like regulated similarly to alcohol.
Alcohol.
Anyone on this side? Yes, Councilman Raisi.
Thank you, Mayor. First question, can you, in the ordinance, if you were to, if we decided to draft something, could we limit that to only new construction? Or do you, does it have to be...
You mean, so...
They'd have to build an actual building. If you had property, they had to build a building.
Rather than reoccupy existing space. I think we would probably want to work with your attorney on that because I, you know, again, untested waters here, right?
Yep.
So, the question is, how much would, like, normal zoning practice and established case law affect that? You know, in what instance would a use only be legally established or desirable in a community if it was in a new building versus an old building? You might be on somewhat shaky ground there.
In other words, if they could demonstrate that they could put all the safety precautions into an existing building to meet all the state's requirements, as well as your local requirements, then you might run into a little snafu there.
Yeah, I mean, because we're a landlocked community, pretty much, and new development is what we need to really see to bring in more revenue. And that's revenue that we'd see right away.
Sure.
Do you, with the, if this was to happen and everything, and you may not know the answer to this, but do you see the market dropping, the price, you know, with everything? Because it's going to be so readily available, supply and demand, everything goes to be... I've heard they have like, you know, what is it, like, not a concession stand, but where you can get, can go to the vending machines and be able to vend, and do it right out of the vending machine?
Yeah. Yeah, we've heard speculation about, you know, prices wildly fluctuating and then having it, you know, kind of kick back into the black market being more attractive, you know, based on prices. So, I don't think that we've seen anything from other states that suggested that, you know, the effects of legalizing it made it more attractive to go back to illegal means of attainment. I think it's just going to be really like a balancing act probably over the, you know, next few years, just as with any new, quote-unquote, new industry. And if you don't know, I think, I'm not sure how commonly known this is, but if and when, you know, it becomes legal in, for recreational use and also with the medical marijuana, you're not allowed to purchase it from another state where it's legally established and, like, bring it into Michigan. So, again, from seed to sale, it would all be like a Michigan product, not brought in from elsewhere, if that makes...
Okay. Another thing I'd heard is that they're talking about having a minimum of what it takes, like, for the grow facility, they're going to have to put like a two and a half, like, a quarter of a million dollars up. Can you, do you know anything about that, or what's going on there?
The proposed rules have really, our understanding is that they're really stringent financial requirements for someone who will be issued a license. So, it basically is a way, I suppose, to pre-fun, fly-by-night. Some smaller entities are saying that it's a way to really kind of only allow big business to be in the industry. So, there's complaints in that regard. We understand, like, from our research, that the legal, the recreational push for, you know, legality is saying that they would like to have, like, a microcategory for growers, kind of like a microbrewery. But that's not necessarily in the medical marijuana act, so...
If I could just go back to your question about whether or not they have to rebuild new buildings. You know, if an operation was going to move into an existing building, you know, they would have to be reviewed under the existing building code. And I'm sure there's probably something in your ordinance right now that says if they're going to put more than the equalized value of that building, if they're going to invest that much money in the building, then, you know, you may have means of eliminating non-conforming conditions and getting them to rebuild a new building in that case. So, you know, the policy would go not only through the zoning, but also in the building department as well, you know, when it comes to existing buildings.
Okay. You said, like, a 500-plant place would be like a one-person thing. But what about for security and stuff? I mean, there's nobody else there, it's just one person works it, and it just fenced off, and everything's...
So, a lot of the security has to do with surveillance, cameras, lighting, and things like that. Not necessarily people walking around.
Okay. Mayrow?
I have a question first. It states that for the grower license, that the applicant and each investor in the grower must not have an interest in secure transporter or safety compliance facility. And the state will be the ones looking into that and double-checking and making sure there's not all these little shadow companies around and such?
So, luckily, they haven't shifted that type of responsibility to the locals. And we're very, very happy about that. So, basically, there, the state is the entity that would be required to show that they have received your local approval for zoning and building and everything else before they issue a license, rather than saying, okay, you know, we think that they're okay for a license. Now, you, local government, have to do all the checking for all of these, you know, business and operational things.
Okay. My other question is, you stated renewals, that there's this non-refundable fee of not more than $5,000 on a licee to the local community that we can charge. And you said that some communities are looking at annual renewals and such. Is this going to be similar to, like, the Liquor Control Commission, where if we do decide to take this on and have annual renewals, if we have had issues with, you know, public safety and such, are there a amount where they can revoke their license from the state?
Yes, so you would be saying that they are not operating in compliance with your ordinances, and therefore, you would work with the state to, you know, have their license revoked?
So, in other words, just because they may commit crimes, that's not good enough? They have to not be following our ordinance?
Well, I think there'd have to be something that you can demonstrate to the state because the state's the one that holds the license. So, they're the ones that's going to revoke it. So, I think you could, you know, if there's a problem, you can make a case. You know, your public safety is out there, you know, every week, there's constant record. You know, it's important to keep a record of all those things. So, I think if you present that to the state, you know, it's going to be pretty compelling evidence.
Okay. And then you stated that a facility is not allowed to come into community unless we have an ordinance accepting them in. Is there any limit as to how many grow facilities, processing, transporters, provisioning, and compliance facilities any community can have? Or, I mean, is it going to be...
Open season?
Open season for anything and everything?
You are allowed to put a cap on the number of licenses that you will allow in your community. So, it could be a different number for each of the five facilities, the same number for each of the five facilities. Or, again, you could choose to permit one, two, three, four, five, or zero of each of the five facilities.
Okay, now, I'm confused about what the law has said regarding the current dispensaries.
Okay, yeah.
If you could explain that, I mean, there's this, December 15th, they shut their doors, they don't shut their doors. What is that ruling now?
Our understanding from the proposed rules is that they are required to shut down because they, by virtue of not having been licensed under the 2016 law, are not in compliance with the 2016 law. Therefore, they are required to shut down, and they would have to reapply for a license.
Anna Mayor, I just read in the...
One moment, please. Okay, so then, what, I guess would be, what do we do with a dispensary that we have in our community that doesn't shut their doors on December 15th?
Sarah, can I, Mary, may I please, for a sec? Sorry, I know there's a couple council members are saying the same thing.
Yes.
We did get communication from Laura just this week that because there's been so much push, and I see everybody in the audience has heard as well, there's been so much pushback from patients on how they're not going to get their medication, that they are not going to make them... That they are not going to make them close now, but there is a process they're going to have to follow. So I can share that communication with the council. So I, a lot of people probably haven't heard it, just came out like two days ago. So they are going to be allowed to renew.
Okay, um, then what?
But I, they'll have to meet the new, the new standard, so.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, they have to go through the new standards.
Okay, so they would have to apply for the license through the state and now follow our new ordinance that we may enact and such? Okay. And, let's see, one more question that I had. That one was answered. Yes, the difference here between a processor and a dispensary, it seems to me it's just two different names, but they're basically doing the same thing?
I don't think so. I think the processor is sort of like a little lab where they're making food or making lotions or ointments, and then they would sell it to a dispensary.
Okay, so no, they will not be able to make any type of produce or products in a dispensary?
That's right.
It has to all go through a processing center?
That's right. Because then it would have to be tested after it was at the processing center before it went to a dispensary or provisioning center to be sold.
And one other question, every plant has to be tested in a growing facility?
I'm not sure. I mean, a lot of our research is sort of related to the impacts of the land use, not so much the micro details of, you know, the, the kind of business operations, if that makes sense? Do you know?
I, I don't know. And it kind of goes back to the question, how much, how much of, you know, the product has to be tested? You know, they, they must have to take a minimum sample size or something like that, but, and that might come out in the rules that, that are being developed right now.
Okay.
We'll keep you posted.
Is there a specific concern related to the testing that kind of affects Wayne or your decision-making process?
No, that, just my concern is that with the testing, it stated that the prod, the pro, product could be returned to the grow facility. I'm, I'm just, I guess that would be between the testing agency and the grower as to if they're keeping the product, and then what happens with the product that's left with the testing facility?
How do they dispose of it?
How do they dispose of it?
What happens with a bad batch?
Does it go under into the black hole, you know? That kind of thing?
Sure, those, those things will come out with the rules, no doubt.
Okay, all right, then. Okay, that, I believe, is all the questions I have. Uh, Council, yes, Councilman Gabriel?
I just wanted to follow up for clarification on a question you had, Madam Mayor. With regards to the renewals, the $5,000 is more of like a permitted use fee for the city, correct? So if we choose not to renew a licensee to do business, then that means they cannot operate, even if they still hold the state license, correct?
So Matt certainly is familiar with processes for other types of uses that are only licensed by the state. A good example is like a, an auto dealership or a wholesaler of autos. And there's a very established process with Lara, the licensing division at the state, where you work very closely with their, either administrators or investigators if you are making complaint that they're not any longer in compliance with your local ordinances. So the way I'm envisioning it working is that if you had reason to deny their annual license after they were legally, you know, established in a prior year, that you would work with the state and that they would have established steps that the two of you have to take together. And if the facility didn't comply, then they are going to, they have administrative hearings at the state, they do this, you know, again, like with the auto dealerships, where, you know, they have a process they have to take, follow administratively to revoke a license. So I, I'm, I'm quite sure it would be a similar process.
And the same with the liquor offices, I mean, you guys inspect places that have liquor license to make sure they're in compliance. And so if they don't get a renewed business license or whatever license you're granting them locally, you know, you would send that to the state, and that would be, again, grounds for them to consider revoking their, their license.
But, I mean, that's time-consuming and a large administrative effort. You know, I think if you know what it takes to get all your records together and make your inspections and really document that they're not meeting your standards, it certainly will be a, a large effort for your staff and administrators.
Okay. Yes, Councilman Sanders?
I wonder, I guess it's more for the administration, if, if, first, two, two questions for the administration, then one for you all. Can we get a, as we move through this process, can we get, like, a video or something that, like, from a facility in Colorado or from a state that has it, to show us how these things operate, how these things look? You know, it's like, you know, we all have different views, like, it's going to be a locked-up kind of thing, it's, you know, is it going to be an appealing look? Is it going to be that sort of stuff? You know what I'm saying? That's the first thing. Secondly is, how many, I know we don't have yet an ordinance before us yet, but how many are we proposing? Because I thought these facilities were going to be like big warehouses kind of thing, and 2,100 square feet, it's like twice my house size kind of thing, not very big, right? So you, we could theoretically have several on the same plot of land.
So it is important to note that right now, the way the rules are written, you are allowed to, what they're called, stack the licenses. So if you and I both had separate licenses, we could occupy the same building. So that would require a larger building, of course.
Right. And the, the question I have with you all, I guess, is, you know, there, from what I, from my readings on it and the, and the one event that I went to and attended, the issue that they're having in Colorado is they can't deposit the money anywhere.
Right, yeah.
And so therefore, where there's no depositing the money, and you see this in even bars and things here, right, restaurants that are all cash-only, you know, where's the sales tax coming from? What, they decide they're going to report?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So what we recommend to our clients, honestly, is pretend this is revenue neutral or a cost, you know, for you to administer. It's really good to think, you know, do you think that the uses are appropriate for your community, given your local policies and ordinances? And also, do you think that it could, you know, have potential beneficial spinoffs in terms of, like, we talked about, filling vacant buildings or sites and employing people and, and providing a service that your residents demand? So.
It, it's not a silver bullet from an economic standpoint.
It won't, I mean, it wouldn't be.
I have no further questions at this point.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
So what I'm wondering is that each component of the marijuana, from seed to user, you know, from growing, transportation or, or sampling, transportation, distributing, can we, now, some of those facilities will require different kinds of construction. Say the growing areas will require not a brick-and-mortar building, but rather greenhouses. So as a community's, looking at this as a community for, to try to help increase our tax base, we'd be looking at certain kinds of construction where we get more tax revenue from certain types of construction. Are certain aspects of those components more beneficial in as a ta, increasing our tax base as opposed to others? And can we pick and choose, say, we just want to facilitate just distribute centers or transportation centers and not necessarily growing centers? Because maybe that's just a bunch of pop-up greenhouses where, as opposed, these other components are, actually need to be brick-and-mortar. So is there a differential there? And can we pick and choose on, on, maybe we're just going to go in this part of the avenue of the whole process?
You can. A lot of places are only, you know, allowing one or a handful of the types of facilities. It's really depends on what you want to establish locally. And your zoning ordinance can have development standards that are specific to a use of land. So we can have specific development standards in your ordinance that call for reasonable accommodations for security, screening, you know, building design that's appropriate, and, and so on and so forth. I think it should relate back to your base zoning district, so, you know, because everything we do is based on a character of an area and, and your master plan. So, you know, it has to be reasonably thought out and kind of not only specific to a medical marijuana user, but the fact that you're allowed to altogether prohibit it, and that you must issue them a license, I think gives you a little bit more wiggle room in terms of the standards that you're requiring in your zoning.
So my question would be to the administration, would we receive more, increase in tax base by, by having, facilitating brick-and-mortar type structures for some of the components in this marijuana? Or, or is it the same as opposed to a green, a bunch of greenhouses set up or actually new construction? Is there, is there a big difference there in tax base? Does it matter if it's a greenhouse or if it's a new construction, brick-and-mortar type structure?
Okay. I, I imagine, first of all, I don't think there'll be greenhouse-type facilities. There'll be indoor growing facilities that have, like, artificial light, sun, you know, they're often, they're a large electric, electrical users. So I think that it would be that kind of a, a use. So it wouldn't be kind of temporary structures, that it would be grown commercially in an inside warehouse is what I, I envision. It could be something different.
No, that's mostly what we see.
But I think that's probably what we're looking at. So if it's going to go forward, it would have to be either a construction of a warehouse kind of building or the reutilization of, of an existing one in our industrial zones.
But does the Act imply that, that they have to be in enclosed structures? Or can they be basically like a block's nursery?
We can make that requirement. I, I've been reviewing others, and they, they, one of the requirements in their ordinances is that everything is done on the inside.
Okay.
So it's all internal, there's no external operations allowed. And I think for the industry, if it's all inside, they can control, you know, the growth, the water, all that. If it's outside, I think it's more difficult to regulate the, you know, the atmosphere or the weather, shall we say? And even, I think, with greenhouses, there's some loss that they can control better if it's an interior structure.
And it's also reasonable to require it to be indoors because of the environmental, you know, factors like smell and, and all the other things. So you're very much on the right side to require that.
You know, and they want ultimate control over the climate in these buildings because, again, they're, they're doing three harvests a year, so they can't afford to be impacted by, well, not to get light from the greenhouse and things like that. It's got to be under tight control.
And in that one slide pointed out that there's three harvests per year. So does that dollar amount reflect each harvest or a total of three?
Well, the one number was per harvest and then multiplied by three, so it's got both numbers in there.
All right, thank you. Madam Mayor?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I didn't, you didn't, no, go on, Councilman Porter.
No.
I, I actually have a question.
Okay, yes.
I heard you mentioned something about stacking of licenses. Can you expand on that a little bit?
So the, the types, three different types of licenses, which was at the beginning of the presentation, were for 500 plants, 1,000 plants, and 1,500 plants. And I think that there's different capitalization requirements for those licenses. So if you're going to have 1,500 plants, you have to have more money in the bank to be able to prove, you know, that you can handle that business. So right now, the rules are written that someone is allowed to co-locate or stack, especially the growing licenses, so that, you know, you could use more space in a building for those. There is also, as we understand it, introduced House bill that's saying, that proposes stacking would not be allowed. So again, it's just something that would have to play out and see if that gets any traction, but we don't understand that it really has right now.
Okay. Yes. Any more?
I, I, yeah, one more question. Now, when it comes to these, these facilities, are they all going to be required to have a certain type of ventilation to prevent smell and things like that?
So through your building requirements and also through development standards that you might develop in your zoning ordinance, you can require all different types of, of, provisions, and your building code probably already does. So, you know, the type of, how, how they dispose of, like, water and byproducts, that would be covered. You know, the, the air filters. In one of our client communities, we required a growing facility to submit a operation, operations plan as part of its special land use consideration. And they said, well, typically, we change our air filters every 12 months. Here, we are saying that we will do it every nine months, and that's part of the condition of their special land use approval. And therefore, if they are not changing it every nine months, the special land use could be revoked, for example, and the license revoked. So the operations, nuts and bolts, would be kind of assessed out during the building, and it could be, again, you know, a zoning issue as well, if that were the way that your ordinance were written.
Okay. Councilman Porter?
Oh, thank you. Neglecting the, the thought, first of all, the $5,000 administrative fee, and also neglecting the thought that there could be a new facility that would generate property taxes, the, the other facilities, other than the provisioning centers, really do not generate revenue for the city, other than the provisioning center. Am I correct on that?
Oh, in terms of the sales tax sharing?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
So we could have five, five grow centers, and if they were, they were put into existing buildings, it would really not give us any income whatsoever, really, to speak of.
Other than, you know, making a viable use in that, in that building, yeah.
Okay. So then, if, if we did, I mean, this is just a, just a, I guess, more of a thought, if we did allow a grow facility or numerous grow facilities, it would be beneficial probably to the city to allow all five types of things in the city, because you, you have to test, you have to, we're going, if, if we pass the ordinances, we're definitely going to have a provisioning center, so why not have a local supplier or two or, and a test facility? And then, and then, of course, I would assume, and that's a bad word to use, but I would assume that the further you have to transport, the more risk there would be for police matters or whatever, or, so it would only make sense, I think, to have all five.
Keep it local.
Madam Mayor?
Wait, one second. Councilman Racey?
Thank you, Mayor. With a question with the stacking, did you say that these, these five can't be in the same facility? Or can some of them be in the same facility?
The growers, if, if you and I both had growers licenses, but we weren't, you know, business partners, we would be able to, to locate them in the same facility. I don't believe that you can stack the other uses in one facility, just the growing licenses.
So you couldn't have a, a grower and a different person that's a processor in the same facility and have all of it in one?
Not that, I understand.
Yes, Councilman Sanders?
Madam Mayor, so I, to clarify something you said, because from what I understand, these grow facilities, they sell their product to somebody, right? Usually dispensaries, right? That's their profit.
Or, or provisioning centers.
Well, that's their profit, we should be able to get some money, tax monies from that.
The way we understand the statute is that this 3% excise tax is just on the dispensaries, not on the other uses.
That's right.
Hmm, that's correct, according to the law.
Yeah. And then we receive 25% as a municipality, all that 3%.
Right.
If appropriate, yeah. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I had a question, just maybe to, maybe that, that John and Sarah could maybe elaborate, have you been, are, what is your pulse on how Lansing's going to administer this? Do they have the staff? How are they going to handle compliance issues? Those kinds of things. How, I guess, how, how hard is it going to be to get regulation and compliance from the state? Because we have had problems, all municipalities have had issues with Lara trying to identify who is in charge and how to get compliance, or if you have to make a, a complaint about a regulatory issue that's not being met, so.
I think it's just sort of the same assumption that we all have from administering local regulations, you know? So as we described upfront, we're consultants in zoning, planning, land use, economic development, building inspections, all these things, which, you know, really do require a partnership. We administer local zoning functions, we serve, you know, as zoning admin- We administer local zoning functions, we serve, you know, as zoning administrators and building officials. So that's kind of our understanding of things is, um, you know, trying to work lockstep with them on regulating local land uses. And I think we should just assume what everyone's been grumbling about, and when you go to conferences and trainings, um, you know, you kinda do that coffee, the over-coffee discussion, and everyone says like, they're so slow coming out with these rules. Um, you know, December 15th was supposed to be when everything would be figured out and they would be able to issue licenses, when, you know, now our understanding is that they'll just start accepting applications on December 15th and, you know, we don't really know when licenses would be issued. You hear rumors that it wouldn't be until next summer and, and everything, so, I mean...
Yeah, I was hoping that you said, you know, they're hiring 50 people and it's gonna be smooth. I was hoping, I thought maybe, I missed it. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
With your guys' research with regards to the testing facilities, what percentage of the testing that was done within the facility was correlated directly to medical or any kind of marijuana?
Versus the other testing that went on, other products? I, I don't know, I can look into that for you in that one case study.
I think that's a good question to think, you know, can we reap, um, kind of related economic benefits? Because to me, the testing facility sounds, you know, like, okay, that might be a, a fairly high-paying job, you know, even at $15 an hour, that's wonderful. Um, you know, something that a skilled tradesperson would have to undertake, if not, you know, a chemist or a scientist of some sort. So I can see why that would be a potentially locally desirable use, um, you know, compared to, to some of the others, if you had to compare them.
Okay. Yes, anybody? Yes, Councilman Sanders?
Um, I was looking at your questions, uh, to help move forward, and item, uh, question number six on the form, is how would you administer a limited number of licenses? First come, first served, lottery? I'd like to know from the legal team next, or, or city attorney, maybe next meeting, or she can answer now, if someone buys land and it fits within the zoning and we don't give them a license, how is that, how is that right?
If your police power ordinance says that there's only a capped number of licenses available, you know, our understanding, which has been sort of supported by rules that have been issued by the state, is that you are allowed to deny a use. Because remember, this is the one use that the state explicitly told us, you do not have to allow it.
I, I, I understand that allowing a use.
Mm-hmm.
But if we're allowing the use, how are we...
One, right, let's say one facility.
Right.
Right? And you've allowed it and they've developed...
What I'm saying, no, no, I'm saying is how do we tell a person that's by lottery, that if they come with the money and they come with, say, and it's a permitted use and they buy the land, that you can't do it, but we're gonna let this someone that doesn't have land here yet?
Yes.
Yeah, but, I mean, that's not the only, you know, program that the state has, licensing program that's done by lottery, right? And they do other lotteries at the state in terms of game, you know, fishing, hunting licenses are done by lottery and things like that.
Oh, so the state's gonna do the lottery then? Not us?
No, I'm saying, no, they're not gonna do the lottery. You're gonna do the lottery if you only allow one or a couple of these facilities. That might be one approach. Lottery might be one approach.
Just curious.
My point was that lottery has been used for doling out limited numbers of licenses.
But we're talking hunting licenses as recreation versus something that's gonna make someone a lot of money, or they're gonna be left out in the cold?
Right. And I would also point out, though, that this wouldn't be the first time a community has been confronted with so and say, saying that they bought a piece of property with the expectation that they're gonna do something on it, when in fact, they, they, you know, they may not meet all the requirements, they may not meet all the, you know, the requirements that the community has. It, it happens, but, you know, you're, you're protected against that.
And we fully expect all of this to be tested. You know, the, the desire, if Wayne were to permit any of them, is that it does, it's not tested here. You know, but just like with '08, um, it, everything will be tested.
Madam Mayor, I got a question.
Yes.
Based on some of the things that were just being said?
Yes.
So if, so if we had a bunch of people that wanted to come and we're only gonna have one or two licenses, can you have like a time period and then you do interviews and look at whose plans are the best and what it does for the community, or you just have to pick random?
I frankly think that this is the one area and the one subject that would make me want to wait and see how other communities are doing it, even just a little bit. If I, you know, if I were an elected official somewhere, again, you know, we are not pro or con any of this. I, this might be something that I would like to see and wait and see if the state comes up, out with rules on, or to see how others are doing it and see how it works out in other communities. So, uh, you know, like we said on, on somewhere, you know, consult your local attorney, you know, see what their thinking is, it's, it's untested.
It, it's untested, and as, as we're sitting here talking about it, you know, I'm thinking, well, you have a limited number of liquor licenses, right? You know, you assign your, your population, but they can be transferred in, right? So, you know, I'm thinking to myself, can any of these be transferred? You know, what, what is the policy on that? You know, we don't, we don't know, untested. I, I can't imagine they would. If you have a local limit of, of facilities, they're not gonna allow them to be transferred, but...
Okay. I do have one question, I may have missed it. So the state is only going to allow so many licenses for grow facilities, so many licenses for dispensaries, or it's unlimited?
The state, from the state's perspective?
The state, because they're, unless they have a license from the state, they can't even come here.
Right, we're not aware of any limits that the state's gonna put on these.
So there could be a million licenses available for grow facilities.
But a...
Okay, yes.
But a license won't be granted unless it's permitted in the community where they're applying for the license act.
Okay. Okay. Then that's another question. If they're granted...
I think it's going along with Councilman Sanders.
Yeah, everything with the ordinance, but yet the state doesn't give them a license, then what happens?
I think we would move on.
Untested.
They wouldn't get a license and we would move forward with another, possibly.
Okay. May I chime in on that?
Yes.
It's interesting, because we've been reading through a lot of different ordinances, and Matt and Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are some communities that are putting in place in their ordinance that if you do have a facility, you better have a backup plan, if you're denied that license.
Ooh.
Okay. So, is that correct, Matt?
Yes.
That's what we've been reading. And we've been looking at that just because of that fact, that you have companies or groups going around the state buying up properties, but they're kinda gambling right now that they're going to get that license 100%. That's not, you know, for sure. So that's something which I thought, I think it was Hazel Park, maybe, that they were putting, or something like that, were putting into place to make sure that you didn't end up with properties that were vacant.
Smart.
Are there any more questions from the council? Do anyone from our planning commission or zoning board have questions? Yes?
I do. Um, I don't know if, Matt, you may be able to answer this for me. The state's not gonna put a restriction on any of the ordinance or, maybe that's not the right word, but any of the wording that we put into our ordinance that we put together for these facilities. They're not gonna say, well, you can't say this and that ordinance and you, you gotta have this and that. We'll be able to write our own ordinances, is that my understanding?
Yes, um, I, I think we can tell by the direction that they're going, that they're, they're really being deferential to the locals, um, though, you know, there could be an environment where they, they change that deference. I don't think it's happening any, you know, there's no evidence that that deferential treatment will change.
Okay. Anyone else from zoning or planning? No? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience other than those members? No? Okay. All right. Yes, Kathy?
Don't we already have an ordinance where we can only allow three?
That's for the dispensaries, right?
Well, it...
Is that what we have two already that we've approved or you've approved?
Mm-hmm.
It, the ordinance actually doesn't state that there's a cap on the number, but there were concentrations put in that said that you can't have a, a dispensary so close to another dispensary, 1,000 feet, and also it can't be located within 1,000 feet of school, church, house, or, or park. And so we had that in there. And what that did is, because we're such a, a compact community, uh, there's houses almost every 40 feet, so it really is, it, it kind of forced, um, the land use to occur in the southwest quadrant of the city where it's mostly industrial away from housing. And so it really did allow for, I think, a max of three is basically all that could kind of fit into our ordinance with those requirements of the concentration and the location requirements.
How is the one doing, is it open, is it the one up all the way through? You're trying to get an all-inclusive...
It is, it, there, um, there are three that were approved, two are open and running, one is not, uh, they're in the permitting process because they're going to move a structure and clear land and all of that, and it's not going forward at this time. I mean, they've got permits and they're working on things, but it's not open or, or anything like that, so.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Pugh?
Um, if we go back to a tax question, on your page 36, you have a tax indication for the growing facilities. So you're saying that the grower who's a wholesale is getting taxed, and then applying that they're getting taxed 3% to what they typically buy?
Slide 36.
I think of, they, I don't wanna speak for you, Sarah or John.
That's fine.
But I was looking at, um, when you, in, in that section, Mr. Pugh, about state excise tax revenue, uh, it, it does state that, but even when they did say that on mine, I said, this is not a shared revenue. So that is, they'll be able to garner, I think, sales tax from that, but that would not be something shared to the local community.
Okay, so if we go back to what Anthony was asking, that if the retailer who collects sales tax, the consumer, is not getting reported to the state because they can't deposit their funds, there is no tax being collected and there's no revenue sharing from that 3% tax?
Well, we're relying on their reporting of that, and then also there, I assume there will be checks and balances if they, you know, the state's saying you've got 87 people coming in every day, they're, they're not coming in there just to buy nothing. So we assume that there will be some connection to kind of, maybe like, I, I, I guess we could equate it to how waitresses are, are taxed on their tips. So it depends, you know, the, the restaurant's has this much revenue, so the waitresses, they assume are getting this much in their tips, and then, so it kind of reduces that self-reporting and kind of maybe establishes, uh, how much revenue is, is garnered so that a tax can be received and shared with us, so.
Okay. Yes.
Can I, real quick?
Certainly.
I just wanna bring to everybody's attention, you'll see a lot of new faces in the room tonight, we have a lot of individuals here, and I wanna thank all of you, because I'm sure I talk to every one of you. A lot of people are interested in opening business in our community, so, um, I just wanna thank you all for being here tonight as community development director, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Wild? Could you stand up, please?
Sure. So what are the, the federal ramifications where if, that these companies pay us money for licenses down the road or whatnot, and we deposit that money in our accounts, what's the federal ramifications of using dirty money?
Mm-hmm. I'm sure that's one of those, that'll be up for discussion. Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Well, um, thank you for coming tonight, I really do appreciate it. This has probably been, out of the four I've seen, this has been the most informative and most helpful. And this is what I've been asking for. I would just like to state, though, uh, when I was at the convention in Holland, the mayor there, the mayor of Holland, she said, you know, things are happening in Michigan as far as development and developers coming in, but we have to be smart in our development. We don't sell. We don't sell ourselves just to have that money coming in. And as they stated, it's gonna be revenue neutral for probably at least two years, I would think.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how it travels.
Yes, yes. So, you know, just because it looks like it's a golden egg right now, a lot of communities around us that I have talked to are not moving forward with it. The ones that are moving forward with it are the ones that are in financial difficulty, which is too bad, because they're, you know, it's, uh, you know, it's just something that we really need to think about. We have to be smart in our development. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
Well, we have an agenda, yet there's items on that agenda.
So the next item is on citizens' comments on matters not on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Are there any citizens' comments that were not already discussed with the, um, medical marijuana presentation? Okay?
Motion adjourned.
And a motion's not necessary because it's a study session, so we will just adjourn at 7:40.
Yes, and we will reconvene at 8 o'clock for our regular council meeting. Thank you.
Ma'am.